Mr. Nadan, just a couple of final questions about the purchase of Cowpas to Row. You gave evidence immediately before lunch that the purchase and the associated impact on the financial statements of the council, because you've now borrowed some additional funds. It wasn't contemplated in the budget. Then you provided to, I think, the meeting of the council of the 14th of December 2022, an updated long-term financial report incorporating those changes.
Correct, as required by the T-COPE and the commercial banks.
Sorry?
T-COPE and commercial banks required an updated long-term financial plan that is actually endorsed by the council, so I had to update that to meet the requirement.
Now, details of that updated report, but can I ask you in summary, the purchase of the property, what effect did it have on the budget?
Obviously, the borrowing cost would have gone up.
Yep.
And that would be offset by increase in domestic waste income. And then it would also impact on the restricted cash, which is the domestic waste reserve. Those would be the key implications, I would think, yeah.
All right. The restricted cash reserves from the domestic waste charge, that was used to fund part of the...
Five million was borrowed from the domestic waste.
And then there was borrowing of additional funds from a bank.
So, yep, we borrowed $32.7 million from CBA. Twenty million dollars of that was used to purchase this property. $500,000 was borrowed additionally at that point in time to activate what we call the second part of the loan facility. So that money was also drawn down as a fresh trench. And that money then was used to buy the second mattress shredder. And the balance of $12.2 million is currently sitting in internally restricted reserve, which is earmarked for improvement works.
That's improvement works for the site?
Correct.
And that money hasn't been spent yet?
No.
Now, you've just referred to some of the money being used to buy the second mattress shredder.
Yes.
It was anticipated that the operation of the mattress shredder would generate income?
Correct.
Also, was it anticipated from the site that there would be possibly income generated from an operation of a truck wash bay?
Yes, that's what understanding is.
Now, I want to take you to a document that was provided to the Governance Committee meeting of the 28th of January 2025, document INQ.001.001.1128. If we can just bring up the first page, I did take you to this document yesterday, but we'll just double check if there's any difficulty. You can live stream it. So you can see that's Agenda for the Governance Committee meeting of the 28th of January this year. Would you go through to page 0092? And you see that's headed Finance Report, December 2024, and a report prepared by you.
That's correct.
Now, I want to take you to the second page of this report, which is page 93 of the document. You'll see it's headed Report Budget Performance. And I want to take you to the table where, no, sorry, if you go back just before there, you state this report provides the Governance Committee an update on current issues impacting on the 24-25 budget. Progress is achieving saving targets as resolved by council. But if we turn to the first part of the table and the last entry where you've got mattress recycling income?
Yep.
And there's a budget impact and you've got negative one million. Then a comment delays in other councils utilizing CEC. Then staff are actively engaging with neighbouring. We move to the next page. Councils, however, unlikely the budgeted income will be realised by 30 June 2025. And this is offset by 450,000 budgeted operating expenditure. This is an emerging risk which needs to be monitored.
Yep.
Now, can I ask you about that entry? The mattress recycling income, where you have budget impact negative one million, what does that refer to?
That means that we will not be able to, or there is a shortfall in revenue from that mattress recycling income.
Right. And is that shortfall in the amount of a million dollars?
Yes.
If we, you then talk about this is offset by 450,000 budgeted operating expenditure.
Yep.
What are you referring to there?
All right. So when we did the modelling for the mattress recycling facility, we built in a projected number of mattresses that would be recycled at the facility. And obviously, that will give us user charges when others, others, councils dropping mattresses in our facility, we'll be charging them by mattress, right? And also there will be steel that will be extracting from the mattresses and selling it. And on the other side, there will be some operating costs, like running the mattress shredder, technical staff, and, and, you know, I guess also the, what do you call the, what they call the bucket, bucket grab or something?
Excavation?
No, it's grab something, I can't recall the name. So it just picks the materials and puts it there. So the operating cost of all those were factored in. So if you're not getting, if you're not processing the number of mattresses as you expected, then obviously there is an impact on the expense side, they're not actually increasing. So that 450 reflects that.
And that piece of equipment, was it known as the grab bucket?
That's right.
Now, your final comment there is this is an emerging risk which needs to be monitored.
Yep.
What's the risk?
The risk is, obviously, it's a new business venture. There were, I believe, some resistance, not resistance, from the staff using WHOHS matters in operating of that facility. And I guess there was some advocacy piece done by the then mattress collecting contractor with other councils, telling them not to use our facility. So there was some negative implications coming from them. That was at that point in time. So I guess it was prudent to monitor that. You know, whether other councils are joining or not, it's a bit of a slow process. So, yeah, it was emerging this.
Can you see the next entry on that page 94 is truck wash bay income?
Yes.
And a negative 835, 835,000?
Yep.
Again, you note equipment costing 400,000 is being procured, but it's unlikely the budgeted income from this initiative will be realised by 30 June.
Yep.
So again, when it was projected that there would be income from that particular aspect, that hasn't eventuated.
That's right.
But again, you note this is offset by a saving in operating expenditure.
That's right.
And then the next item is sale of recycled materials.
Yep.
Again, is it your, as you say, it's correlated to mattress recycling initiative and sale of co-mingled waste?
Yep.
The minus 550,000, does that indicate that, again, there was an expectation that this would be generating income? And that hasn't come to fruition by this time?
That's correct.
If we can just return to page 93 and again towards the bottom of that table. The second last item, other income, Canterbury-Bankstown Voyager Bridge contributions. Is this the matter you referred to earlier in your evidence?
That's right.
There was, it was subject to some kind of arbitration with a resolution being made?
Yes, that's the second part of the deal.
Right. And as it says here, the timing is likely that that revenue will not be settled by 30 June 2025.
That's right.
Now...
Hang on, so...
Oh, sorry?
Just refresh my memory. So when we did the 24-25 budget, we had, there was an agreement from Bankstown to Canterbury-Bankstown Council to pay Liverpool City Council 5.3 million dollars. But that was the first part and the second part together. The 2.8 million dollars out of that was already recognised as a revenue when we did the initial invoicing to them. This bit there, I think I put it in as well, on instructions of the then CEO, Mr. John Ajaka, saying that, you know what, we will pursue this, we will, they've already agreed to 5.3 million dollars. So that we will, we will get the balance. And that's the balance we talked about.
All right. You spoke about an instruction from John Ajaka.
Yep.
At the time of this report?
Yep.
Mr. Ajaka's no longer employed?
Yeah, but the thing is, this was in the budget, in 24-25 budget. So when we included that, he said, well, they've already agreed to 5.3. We will, we have guaranteed they were going to get that. So the balance between 5.3 and what we have invoiced them, we recognise that as income in this financial year 24-25.
All right. So the difference between the 5.3 and... Mr. Nadan, I was asking you questions about that entry entitled Other Income, Canterbury-Bankstown Voyager Bridge Contributions. And you're saying that the 5.3 million, an amount of that was included in revenue in the budget?
Correct.
There was an outstanding amount?
Yep.
And as indicated there, it's unlikely to be realised until the next, or the current financial year?
Correct.
I want to take you to another document that's been provided to those assisting the commissioner. This is document LCC.016.001.0006. And that can be live streamed. As the table indicates, it's the mattress shredding facility income and expenditure, starting with 2021 and then a number of years actual and then projected total. Have you seen this document before?
Yes, my staff prepared this and I...
Okay. Can I? Hey, the first section, capital expenditure, that's the various pieces of equipment, for example, the shredders and the grab bucket?
Correct.
Then under operating expenditure, we've got employee related, which becomes an actual in 24-25. But before that, there's been expenditure incurred for consultants, et cetera.
Yep.
Now, under operating income, you've got recycling service and sale recycling materials, steel.
Yep.
And for the financial year 24 to 25, there are two amounts there. Can you see about 90,000 for the recycling? And then the steel sales, about 61,000?
Yep.
How does that income relate to the table that I just took you to in the February meeting? Where you recalled that the mattress recycling income, there was a deficit of a million dollars? And with the sale of recycled material, a deficit of 550?
We would have budgeted for something, can't remember off the top of my head the amount, but we would have budgeted for income more than a million dollars. So that has come through 151,000 dollars. So we are saying, well, you know what, we are short by a million.
All right.
That's how it relates.
So just roughly, the budget could be a million 100,000?
Correct.
Let's say at the end of the financial year, you actually, the shredders generated about 90,000.
Yeah.
But in the budget, it was over a million, hence there's that
Negative adjustment, yeah.
Impact, right? And then we've got the operational savings for 460,000. And then the net cash investment, that reflects that the revenue generated is less than the various expenditures?
You can zoom into the document so I can see the full document, sorry. No, no, make it smaller, make it smaller, too much, too much. I want to see the headings. Yeah, that's it.
Can you see?
Yep. So that would be the difference between... It missed in two things. One is whether we're making a surplus or a deficit. So for financial year 24-25, we ended up making a bit of a profit, which is about 50 surplus.
About 50,000?
Yes. Which is the difference between total expenditure is 561, minus this. All right. So taking the total expenditure, 561, and taking off the operational income and then also taking off the 460 that we would have otherwise incurred. So there is a difference of 50, which is a surplus. And then cash investment inflow-outflow, there is a outflow 167, which is the 218 on the top, which we spent on capital expenditure, minus the surplus of 50. That's the difference.
And then underneath Funding Service Sources, I'm sorry, you've identified the domestic waste management levies.
Paid for that.
A particular grant from the state government and then your loan borrowing.
That's right.
There are just a couple of miscellaneous topics that I want to ask you about. As part of the Civic Place project, there was part of the project development agreement signed with Built Development. There was an agreement by council to sell part of the land it owned under a call option.
The call option, yes.
And the call option was for a fixed price of about 10.6 million dollars.
The original price, which was agreed back in 2016 as part of the original PDA, was 12 million.
Was what, sorry?
Was 12 million. And then the price reduced to 10.6 in the Second Amendment of the PDA, which I believe was executed around 2017, thereabouts.
Has the call option been exercised?
Not yet.
Are you anticipating that if it is exercised, that will mean that revenue of about 10.6 million will come to the council?
Out of the 10.6, they've already paid us a deposit of what, 3.3 million? And then the balance of 7.3, I think, or 7.6 thereabouts will come.
The balance of roughly the 7.6 million, has that been taken into account in either the last financial year budget or this year's financial year budget?
It will not impact on the operating budget. The reason being that 7.6 million dollars is deemed or will be treated like proceeds from sale of land.
So it's kept within the capital?
It will go into cash.
Sorry?
It will come into cash. So basically, selling a land.
I'm sorry?
It's like, it will be treated like selling a land, so it will just come into cash and we'll dispose the land.
But you haven't taken that into account in the current budget?
In projecting our cash position for 24-25, we did include in the projections the cash coming in. But that hasn't come in at 30 June.
Now, another matter that I wanted to ask you about, and you referred to it during your evidence, in the externally restricted funds, that projects are funded under the New South Wales Government's Western Sydney Infrastructure Grants.
Yep.
So applications are made, funding is provided, and the funding is earmarked for a particular project.
Yes, I believe there are four projects under that scheme that's been funded.
As the Chief Financial Officer, have you made any observations about any of the grants, whether the application that was made for a certain amount? And when there is an attempt to actually build the particular project, of a discrepancy between what was sought and given and the actual costs at the time of construction?
I'm, as a CFO, I'm not very hands-on on that project. There's a special team in there who manages the project. But I do believe there were, there were projects where the application was done and they had to make some scope changes and price changes. Because what was agreed, what was put to the government in the first place, due to cost implications and increases, it was not possible to deliver that project for that price. So I guess there is a process engaged, a process to manage that. And I believe if you can't deliver, then you need to go to the department and say, this is what it is. And once the variation is agreed, the scope and the pricing both change.
And if a grant was for 100,000 and then at the time of actually doing the work, the cost had increased to 200,000, is your understanding it's a matter of applying for a variation to the grant?
That's right.
And if that variation isn't awarded, then the cost to complete the project would have to be met by council?
I believe that's the part of the grant agreement.
I think you just referred to other people within council who deal with those
Yes, there is.
particular grants.
Yes.
And is that a team that not only is looking at what the grant was for and trying to organise the work to be done, but also a separate finance team that looks at the grants or looks after the grants?
Correct. One of my management account is on secondment in the team.
And that's not part of your team?
No, she's out for three years. And definitely, I'm missing her.
Now, final matter that I wanted to ask you about was staffing. You've um, given some evidence, for example, about um, with. The recent budget, uh. There, I'm sorry, I'll withdraw that. Recently, within council, two directors and their executive assistants were made redundant.
Correct.
And that necessitated some kind of payment, which. My understanding is your evidence was that that came out of last year's budget.
Yes.
Uh. Over the years, there's been um. A number of restructures and a number of employees being made redundant or being paid out in some way. You agree with that?
Yes.
That's your observation?
That's right.
Uh, in um, an interim report prepared by the Office of Local Government. They referred to recording payouts to staff under deeds of release. Totalling over seven hundred thousand dollars since April twenty twenty one. Now, if you assume that the report is up until maybe early twenty twenty four. Um, and as the chief financial officer, does that accord with your? Um, understanding or impression of the additional costs in, for that period in paying out staff?
No, I think the, the number is much higher.
The seven hundred thousand is much higher?
No.
Oh.
What was paid out is higher.
Um, within the financial statements, is there a particular item? Which records payouts under a deed of release?
It will be, so if you take twenty four, twenty five financial year. And we said we are charging all these termination payments or redundancy payments against that provision. Uh, it will appear against employee-related expenditure.
As a what, sorry?
As an aggregate level employee-related expenditure.
And what's the description of the item again?
Employee-related cost.
Not separately.
No, unless it is for uh, the CEO. Because I think in the annual report, at the back of the document, we need to disclose that. But if it is like the directors and others, no, they are just, at an aggregate level, you will see a hundred million dollars, that's it.
And the figure that I referred you to from this report, your view is that um. More, substantially more money or?
It's close to five million in total.
For what period?
I think it's going back to twenty twenty one, to twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four.
Close to five million.
Yes, because twenty two, twenty three was a very busy year when the, when Mr. Dipless left. Uh, we had uh, the director planning going, the director corporate services going, director infrastructure going. And the chief people officer going. So.
And your understanding is the, the people who occupied those positions received either a redundancy or some kind of.
Correct.
Payment that um.
Yes.
Uh, required completion of the deed of release.
Yep.
Um. Also, um, I'm sorry, withdraw that. We, last week, we heard some evidence about. The employment industrial relations system at the council. And there was a reference to uh, the award and then a salary system, I think it's known as.
Yes.
But we also heard evidence that there is also the capacity to pay what's known as a market rate. So um, for a particular position, instead of looking at where they would come within the salary system. A determination is made that they should receive a payment above the, the item in the salary system.
Yeah.
For market reasons, which usually refer to the fact that um, it's a special skill role or there's um.
In-demand roles.
Yes, and there's um, a demand within the market, and so to attract somebody, you need to pay more. Again, as the chief financial officer, can you give us an indication of the number of positions? Um, which receive the market rate?
I don't think I can give you a number off the top of my head.
Mm hmm.
But there are many cases um, where the market rate offered. Let me just take a step back and explain you how the, the salary system works. So there are gradings. And each grade um, is four steps in it.
Can I just pause? Is that the grading in the salary system?
Yeah, so if it is a um, say, I'll take finance example, this is easier for me. If I say, all right, I have a vacancy for an accountant. So the position description that I develop for that accountant. Um, and, and the qualifications and other speci- specific skills that are required for the role. Goes through a job evaluation process, which is done by the H R team. Once they make that assessment, I don't know what system they're using, they do the input, comes out the grade. For this, depending on the judgment, the skills and others required, this grade is graded, or this position is graded fifteen. So when I go to the market, grade fifteen has a salary attached to it.
Yes.
Under the wood. Now, if I find someone that. In general sense, the, the, the candidate is appointed at grade fifteen, level one, generally. But then I also have a option to give them other two, three, oh, four at the time of appointment. Because I think they're bringing more experience or more skills on the job. I have that option or flexibility to do that. Obviously, I don't approve, I make a recommendation to my director and he approves it.
Mm hmm.
Now, when we talk about market rate, it's going beyond one, two, three, four. I'm, I'm actually giving them more than what.
Yes.
Grade fifteen, level four wants. Now. In my view, there has to be a limit of how much you can actually offer. Because if you think about the grading, there's another grade on top of that, which is grade sixteen. So if you go and offer something which is more than the, the entry point for sixteen. I'll be questioning, why are you getting this, this person? Why don't you o- o- regrade this position or? Give that more responsibility so the grading comes to sixteen. I think there is a little bit of control you can actually manage there. But um. Again, I, I know people go, were appointed at market rates, but I don't know exactly, obviously not off the top of my head, exactly how much have been offered. Uh. In total, I believe is the net impact. Was, that was when we do, we were doing twenty four, twenty five budget, it was close to. A million dollars. That was the impact on the budget because of market rate appointment.
You say one million?
One million. I can't remember how many people were there, but there was a list of positions.
The ultimate effect of all of those market rate appointments?
Sorry?
The ultimate effect to, to the bottom line, as it were.
A million, yes.
Of those market rate appointments.
On top of that, where, where some people um, were given um, I guess salary increases. Within the exist- existing staff also got some salary increase.
But within the salary system?
Uh, no, outside the salary system.
Right. Do you know what the net effect of those increases?
Market rate and um, salary increases combined was about one point five million.
One point five?
Sorry, is that an additional one point five to the one million?
No, in- included in there. So one point five was the bottom line impact on salary cost. Due to market rate appointments and salary increases that were given to staff. And I think we provided that list to the governance, to the governing body without names, we gave them the position.
And in the financial statements, that um, identification, just concentrating on market rates. Which you identified a net impact for twenty four, twenty five of close to a million dollars. Can you identify that in the financial statements?
It will be again reported at an aggregate level employee cost.
At, in an aggregate?
Employee-related cost. But I guess the point there is, if you give salary increases or make market rate appointments in one financial year. It has an ongoing impact in the four years because the base has changed, and then the old increase will come on top of that.
Yes.
So it has an ongoing, long-term impact.
Did you say this was subject to a report to the governing body?
We provided them a list of, of positions, there were, where there were market rate appointments and also people who got salary increases. So without the names.
Yes.
We gave them the position, the deed was the position where actually salary, uh, rates, uh, salary increases were provided.
A- and was that a report that was given as part of the budget approval process?
Correct, as part of the concern engagement process, we gave them, there was a concern about why the salary is increasing by that much. So we said, well, there is an old increase, we have created more roles, and by the way, these many people. Were, were appointed at market rates, plus they got selling increases, so that is impact, that's, that's having an impact on the four years.
So that was a report for twenty four, twenty five?
Correct.
Was there a similar report done for the most recent budget process?
Uh, no, we didn't give them the positions. Uh, no.
Uh, the one, the report for twenty four, twenty five, uh, is it a confidential report?
It was provided in confidence, uh, as a supplementary information that the governing body of the council has wanted.
And that was around June twenty four?
Uh, before that, April, when the draft budget was, been discussed, we gave them that.
Oh, so that was part of when you're uh, having consultation with the councillors?
That's right.
You provided this separate report?
Yes.
Um, can you assist us with the, the title of the report?
It was not a formal report, it was just a, a page given to the councillors. So you would not have a, you know, like a cover page attached to that.
Um, as we've seen.
Correct, it don't, don't be like that, no.
Um.
It's just a spreadsheet and has the positions and this, the budgeted salary, the market rate appointment and the variance. Yeah.
That r- report was provided in the lead up to the twenty four, twenty five budget?
Correct, as an explanation why the salary is going up that much.
Your recollection is a similar report was not provided in the lead up to the twenty five, twenty six budget?
No.
Um, do you know why?
I guess. We try, in explaining why the, there was a salary increase of, you know, more than certain amount. We gave them that report, but this time we didn't have that issue.
What do you mean you didn't have the issue?
There was no, there was no request from any of the councillors for that information. And also in terms of, I think there's a fine line between operations and the governing bodies. So what level of information they get is determined by the executive.
Uh, so is your recollection in twenty four, twenty five, one of the councillors, um.
I think it was the mayor who asked that for that.
Asked a question?
Yeah.
All right, that question was not asked in the lead up to the current budget?
No.
Would you just excuse me? There's no further questions.
Um, operator, could, we have brought up document I N Q zero one six, zero zero one, zero, zero, zero four? And this is the long-term financial statements which have been shown before, so they can go on the live stream. You can see there, Mr. Nadan, it's the most recent long-term financial plan.
That's correct.
Can we go ahead to page zero, 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 eight? And on this page, there's a series of ratios.
That's right.
And you're, are you familiar with these ratios?
I am.
These are the O L G.
They were O L G um, ratios, but for financial year twenty four, twenty five, they have made it optional for councils to report on.
Yes, all right. And, but the O L G has a series of. Have I?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're just looking at the screen.
I should have indicated that, I do apologize.
Done, done pretty well for that, to that point. Um, uh, the O L G has a series of benchmarks for each of these ratios.
That's right.
All right. Um, I just want to get your assistance in, in understanding them and, and their significance from your perspective as a, as the CFO. The operating performance ratio, what does that measure?
All right, so that basically looks at operating revenue and operating expenditure. And I guess um, man- managing your expenditure in relation to whatever, within the revenue you are actually collecting. But that's, in a, in a commercial sense, is the profit.
And the ratio is greater than zero? The benchmark, I'm sorry, is greater than zero?
Benchmark is equal to or greater than zero.
And according to this, uh, that benchmark is not currently forecast to be met. I'm sorry, it's going to be met in the twenty twenty five, twenty five, twenty six year.
Yep.
And then not met for the next three?
Correct.
And what is driving that result, do you know?
What is driving that result? Um, well, I guess there is, um, the key one is. Is depreciation, which council basically doesn't have any, much control over. It's, it's about fifty million plus, that sits there. And I think that's a challenge for growth councils. Because even though. The growth council itself doesn't deliver any infrastructure, there is infrastructure that is handed over from the developers to the council that council needs to. And then, day one, if there is a subdivision, said drainage or whatever they put in there. That's, they, once they get the consent, they sell off the, their lots. Maintaining all those infrastructure becomes a responsibility of council.
And that is, is that an, an impact of Austro on this council?
Yeah, so in Austro, it mentioned all those areas, as the development is happening, all those lands, properties are handed over to council. On average, it's about forty million dollars worth of assets dedicated to council, right? Now, because they are infrastructure assets, they start depreciating from day one. So you would argue that, you know, with the new assets, you would not actually require immediate maintenance of those assets. So, but we are required to depreciate from day one. But that's driving that, plus the salaries and other operating costs that's associated with that. And on top of that, I guess, because rate is kept, council is not able to increase rates. So, everything, all of those impacts the bottom line.
That, that was the issue you were raising yesterday about the limited ability of council to raise its own funds?
Exactly right. And then also, um, those, uh, the financial assistance grants, for example, there's timing issues. So we are assuming for twenty five, twenty six, we're gonna get eighty five percent. But as we have seen for twenty four, twenty five, they gave us fifty percent. So there will be timing issues which will actually impact on these ratios. But that's, that's the operating ratio.
All right, and the operating ratio being less than zero, as the CFO, is that a matter that would cause you concern?
Given the factors that I've just put forward, um, as long as they're not overly in red, I think that's not an issue.
What, what do you mean by overly?
Like, if you're talking about ten percent, twenty percent, something like that, then there's an issue because it's gonna, eventually it's gonna impact on your cash.
Yes.
So that's what I mean when I say overly, uh, but, you know, less than five percent, I don't think that's an issue.
Um, not an issue in the context that you've just explained.
Correct, right. And an office of local government has actually realized that, that's why they're saying.
Optional.
Optional.
Can I?
But I guess the important thing there is your cash, your reserves needs to be there.
Can I take you to the next one? Own source, operating revenue ratio?
Yep.
What does that measure?
What it does, it actually looks at the total operating revenue. Again, um, I guess it's a little flawed in the why because. The total revenue, which is the denominator, uh, includes your um, capital income that you are getting. So what it does, it looks at your rates, which is your own source, other income, which is your own source. And then divides it by the total revenue, bottom line. And then, I guess the benchmark. And then I guess the benchmark is, um, is more than, um, sixty percent, I believe.
Yeah.
Again, as a CFO, I'm not too worried about that. Because as I've described, it includes capital expenditure as well. So we talk about on source, operating, and you should be only looking at total revenue minus your capital expenditure, then you look at it.
Thank you. Uh, the next one, the unrestricted current ratio?
Yeah, so that's the, the unrestricted current ratio basically looks at your, um, your current assets and current liabilities that are not related to any restricted, um, reserves. So if you think about, um, so it basically looks at your current assets and current liabilities, which is due in, in twelve months, when we say current, twelve months, um, and then twelve months in your, um, in your liabilities. So it basically looks at the unrestricted components of your current assets and.
And the benchmark is, um, greater than one point five?
I believe so, yes.
And, um, not, not expected to be met this year or in the next, the following two years?
Uh, one point five. Yes.
And, um.
Probably a temporary position now. But as I've described, there are other initiatives, including the seven point three million dollars we're gonna get from the built when they exercise the call option. Entry development of the car parks and other, um, um, any, any case that we're gonna get through project twenty, twenty, project twenty six if I may, that will improve that position. So that tip is temporary. Um, I guess the main reason there was, um, I guess there are a couple of factors. Number one, it's naive to believe that, uh, you know, terminating staff is not costing council, it does cost council. Uh, we have a legacy issue on asbestos, uh, which has already costed more than forty five million dollars. And that's ongoing, two million dollars, the next ten is, two million dollar each for every year. That's a legacy issue, we don't have any other source of income for that. Um, and, um, uh, what else is there? Okay, these, these are the major factors that's impacting, uh, our unrestricted cash position.
All right, and but I, as I've under, what I've understood, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you consider it's temporary because there are measures being taken to address it.
Correct.
But do I take it, though, that it is still a matter that requires ongoing review and attention?
Correct.
And if those measures were not to derive the benefits that you expect?
Yeah.
The forecast here would obviously be.
That's right.
Um, the next one, cash expense cover ratio, what does that measure?
That looks at, that looks at, um, the expense cover ratio, um. I think again it is looking at current, current, um, current available cash and current liabilities in total, in total. And I guess again, um, it's flawed a little bit to the extent that it, it includes, um, six and seven eleven money.
Hmm, excludes restricted funds.
Exactly, so if you are talking about your current assets and current liabilities, you're looking at your total cash, well, you can't touch that.
Do you have a sense of, um, what the cover would be if one ignored the restricted?
Oh, no, I haven't calculated that.
Um, the next one, rates and annual charges?
Rates and annual charges that basically looks at, um, the total rates levied and how much you haven't collected. But the higher the number, that impacts on your cash because you haven't actually collected that.
And, and the benchmark is?
Is five percent. Le, five percent or less? Yeah, less than five. Again, that benchmark was set, I don't know, apparently ages ago, I don't know when. Um, and, uh, also, if you look at the total outstanding, if you look at us, fifteen million dollars, there's about three and a half million dollars or close to four million dollars that relates to pensioners. So there is a council policy which says, well, you can't go too aggressive debt collection on the pensioners. So as the pensioner base rate increases, and you are not actually aggressively pursuing them, then obviously your outstanding rate is gonna give up.
Is this any, is a, an emerging issue, if I can put it that way?
It is, it is, yes.
Um, the next one, debt service cover ratio, you know what that measures?
Debt service, hmm. Uh, again, I guess it is looking at the, um, the corporate repayment, which is the principal and interest, and looking at your cash, what is your ability to repay that? I guess it's same thing. Debt, debt service ratio, interest only.
Another way of meas, measuring a similar issue?
Correct, yeah.
Uh, interest cover ratio, you know what that one is?
It's interest only.
Interest only?
Yeah, it only looks at interest, not principal.
Can I then ask you about, um, the infrastructure and service management ratio?
Yes.
The building and infrastructure renewals ratio, what does that look at, to your understanding?
It looks at, for a particular area, it looks at expenditure that council has done or spent on renewing assets compared to the depreciation of this infrastructure. There is a bit of issue about the definition of renewal, renewal expenditure. And I have that argument with the engineers. If you take a road, for example.
Okay, sorry, what?
Take a road, for example, a two-line road. And when you say renewals, in its strict definition, it's about just renewing those, the two-line road, basically scraping the surface and relaying it. What actually happens in practice is that two-line road, because of traffic demands and everything, is now, when, when they do that, it becomes a four-line road. That four-line road is now, is not classified as renewals, it is classified as new works. But actually you are renewing those two roads. So again, I guess that measurement is really flawed.
Except, I'm sorry, go on.
Yeah, and the other thing I talked about is, is the, um, is the depreciation on new roads. In theory, in theory, in accounting theory, the depreciation that's there, you need to spend that much money because you're consuming that asset and at a time you need to renew that asset. So you set aside that money, that's in theory. But in this case here, as I've said, forty million dollars is, is dedicated assets and they're new assets, brand new assets. Liverpool is a growth council and most of the infrastructure is new. It doesn't need that money on the time. So I guess that, there has to be, I guess, I, I, in epitaph, we say, well, look, we are, um, you know, building a renewals ratio, if we hit about seventy five, that is reasonable.
Seventy five?
Seventy five percent, it's reasonable because of these reasons. Okay, I guess it's a council policy.
Yeah.
Uh, that need to be put in place, that's a reasonable, um, you know, renewal expenditure that we need to do.
All right, and understanding the, the qualifiers you've put on the, the utility of the measure.
Yeah.
Um, the O L G benchmark is equal to or greater than a hundred?
Correct.
In the twenty five, twenty six budget, it's hundred and eighty percent. And then it drops to fifty three, fifty seven, fifty six, thirty nine, fifty two, fifty three, before getting back to about your.
Yeah.
More realistic mark.
Yeah.
On, you would say of seventy five towards the end of the period. What is, what is driving the one eighty to fifty down to thirty nine and back?
To be honest, I'm not sure these numbers are coming from the asset infrastructure team. They provide this and they look at their capital ex, uh, renewals program and they say, this is the program and this is the percentage.
Does, uh, any of these, um, r, ratios under the infrastructure and service management heading, uh, give you cause for concern as the chief financial officer?
Um. I guess the, the asset maintenance one is a bit of a concern that you need to actually maintain those assets, existing assets, and it's, it's below average, uh, or below the benchmark. Infrastructure backlog ratio, I'm not too worried about it, it's a bit of a subjective ratio.
Why, why do you say that?
Because, um, it's, I guess it says how much it's gonna cost you to bring these assets to satisfactory condition. What is satisfactory condition? It could differ from council to council. So that's why I'm saying it's, it's very subjective. Yeah, asset maintenance ratio is, is a concern.
Why?
Because you go to, I mean, the longer you don't maintain these assets, it's gonna cost you more. So that's why I'm saying you've got to be maintaining as you go.
And, um, the, the benchmark is equal to or greater than a hundred for that one?
Correct.
Do you have a view about the utility of that benchmark? Like you, you raised some concerns about the.
For, for asset maintenance, I would hundred percent, I would agree with hundred percent plus. Uh, but for the backlog and the, um, building infrastructure ratios, I think there needs to be some flexibility. Depending on, it's not one fits all kind of thing.
Yes.
It has to be council specific, I guess, a little bit.
All right, just focusing on then the asset maintenance ratio. Does this forecast suggest to you that something different needs to be done in relation to asset maintenance within the council?
Yeah, I guess there, there needs to be a little bit more investment in that area.
More investment and focus in the area, sorry, did you say?
Investment in that area, in asset maintenance.
To get it back to as close to or greater than a hundred?
Correct.
All right. Can I jump ahead in the document to?
Sorry, again, there is an issue about on asset maintenance.
Yes, please.
There is, um, there's a resourcing issue, of course, giving them the funding to do the works. Then it's also delivery, whether the team has the capacity to deliver it, given that we are doing all these major projects.
Yes.
So they are combined.
It's a, it's a resourcing issue in two, on two fronts.
That's right.
The financial resources and the, and the human resources.
Yeah.
I understand. But do I take it from your earlier answers, those two things are the challenge that need to be met and addressed?
Correct.
Could we jump ahead in the document to zero zero three two, please? And this is the base case that you've seen before?
Yes.
And, um, you've been taken to a lot of the detail, I don't want to take, spend too much time with you, but you'll see for the next, um, the forward period commencing after twenty five, twenty six, there's deficits of two point four, one point six, three point eight, one point three before it returns to surplus?
Correct.
Are, are you able to give me a general sense of what is driving those results?
Um. Obviously, from, from the cost perspective, employee related cost is going up. And then there are, obviously through the restructure, trench one, trench two, we will try to manage that. Um, obviously there is a big borrowing cost attached to it, uh, which is the second line borrowing cost, that's.
Borrowing cost for what?
Borrowing cost.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we are actually paying the loan, so that's again driving the bottom line.
And in, what are the main components of borrowing costs?
Main.
Civic place is one, for example?
Civic place, uh, yes, mostly civic place.
All right.
And I think there was something for the Macquarie Mall, but that's almost paid off.
Macquarie Mall's almost paid off?
Almost, yeah.
So is the, is the main item?
Mine was.
The big ticket item, to pick up a phrase you used the other day?
That's civic place.
All right.
Two hundred million.
Yeah. Um, sorry, go on.
And then you've got depreciation, as you can see, is going up significantly from fifty five, fifty eight, sixty. So that's the, in all, all these West Invest Fund, uh, projects we're talking about, once it's completed, council needs to operate it, so that's additional cost on top of that. Um, and then obviously it's gonna be depreciated, so that's driving all this.
And in some of your earlier answers today, you indicated that there are initiatives and measures being pursued to try and.
Correct. So we get cash from all these things that we're doing. And the idea is to invest that in maintenance, renewal of assets, stuff like that.
But again, do I take it that, that the position in the next four years and beyond, but if we just deal with the four years after the current financial year, is that something that you consider needs to be fairly closely monitored?
In the four years?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Because if some of those initiatives don't come to fruition.
Yeah.
The position may trend the other direction.
So this long-term financial plan is, is done every year. And I think we, we are, I was talking to Farooq, maybe we should start doing it every six months, it's best practice and start putting all these changes through, as you know, the budget is set, but then other decisions made in, in between the year, creating positions. For example, th, those are operational decisions that, you know, the, the CEO has done or something is passed by the governing body that we need to incorporate in there, uh, there obviously changes of everything. And if there are significant items coming in, we need to see how it impacts our, our long-term financial plan that can actually drive some strategic decisions.
And tell me if this is too general a question, but sitting here today, how would you assess the overall financial position of the council?
I think we are satisfactory for now.
Satisfactory for now?
Yes, we've got enough cash, um, yeah.
What are the main risks moving forward for that position?
Well, if, if I look at my current long-term financial plan and using this year as the base, um, cash is looking good, so there's no issues there.
Cash is looking good?
Looking good, yes. Um, but then again, it all depends on what, again, is based on assumptions. If we don't realise that, then obviously there are risks in there, so we need to manage those. And then obviously the risk is if the governing body decides to do something different, uh, that's that. But I guess from a governance point of view, the biggest risk there, or biggest issue there is the stability. The leadership keeps changing, the direction keeps changing. So that's, that's the biggest risk. And then, you know, there's staff are just left thinking, what's next?
Sorry, the biggest, the biggest risk to what you describe as the satisfactory position is um, stability at the executive level?
In the core, yeah.
And why is stability at executive level important to managing the, this financial position?
Well, I guess we have seen this, uh, you know, the CEO comes in, he says, here's, here's the direction, this is what we want to do, we, we capture that in the long-term financial plan. The next CEO comes in, the direction changes, some of the initiative that was put in place is taken off. And, uh, so that, again, depends, uh, or impacts on the bottom line and the cash.
And if that sort of change were to happen again in the next, uh, two to three years, this could affect the ability of the council to return.
Exactly, exactly. So this, this is, is a, is a planning document which reflects the position of based on the best information that they put in time, needs to be updated regularly and monitored.
And, um, earlier you, you told me that the cash is, I think, looking good, you said?
Yes.
The, the position has improved since your report.
From, from June twenty twenty four, the position has improved.
Pause for a moment, the position has improved since your report to the governing body in about December of last year?
Correct.
And what has driven that improvement?
Um, obviously the sale of, the settlement of the Hemmerdew piece of land, that has improved. We are able to, we were able to, um, successfully negotiate with banks down to get the three million dollars that we use our money to do that, so that has actually come in. Um, and there was, um, a staff freeze following my report in December. A lot of vacancies kept like that, but that has given us some savings. All these things have worked up to give us a better position end of June twenty twenty five.
And, um, in answer to my earlier question, you said the position is satisfactory for now?
Yes.
Why did you add the words for now?
Well, again, it, it depends on which direction and what decisions are made later on. So I'm saying, based on now, this is what the result looks like, but if there are other decisions made, that has financial implications, might change.
So a, as CFO, looking to return to surplus on this projection.
Correct.
Would you would suggest that, um, fairly close attention needs to be paid to staying on the pathway, so it were?
Correct, correct.
All right. And in answer to, um, some of council assisting's earlier questions, you, um, uh, said that the cost of, um, staff payments, termination payments or redundancy payments and the like was close to five million dollars for the period twenty one to twenty four, correct?
Oh, really, those payments, yes.
Um, and is that something that, uh, those figures are able to be extracted from the council's financial system? That is termination or redundancy payments over a period of time?
Yes, I already heard that report.
The, thank you. Anything arise out of that? Does anyone seek leave to ask Mr. Nadan some question?
Just before somebody does.
Just before somebody does, could I just first hand up to be marked for identification? Um, TB eight general exhibits?
Is this an update to what was MFI seven? All right, that will be the updated index of headed TB eight general exhibits two as of twenty two July at eight AM will be MFI twelve.
May I take you to the third page?
Yes.
Attender, item one six seven, being document INQ dot zero zero nine dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Agenda to governance meeting held on the fifteenth, eighteenth February twenty twenty five.
That will be exhibit twenty seven.
Item one seventy, document INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one one two eight. Agenda to governance meeting held on the twenty eighth of January twenty twenty five.
Exhibit twenty eight.
Item one seven one, document LCC dot zero zero one dot zero zero three dot zero three three zero. ABC, article eighteenth of December twenty twenty four, Liverpool Council facing serious cash flow problem.
Exhibit twenty nine. Yes. Does anyone seek leave to ask Mr. Nadan some question?
I I do, Commissioner, I just thought I'll be. No, ten, ten fifteen minutes.
That's fine.
Mr. Nadan, you gave some evidence about uh assumptions that are used to prepare the budget. Do you remember that?
Correct.
Am I right that assumptions are often a matter of judgment?
Yes.
Um, and there are, sometimes reasonable minds can differ about whether a particular assumption should be made.
Yes.
Um, you can have situations where one well informed person thinks an assumption is reasonable and another well informed person thinks that the assumption is not reasonable or is unduly optimistic.
Generally, yes.
Um, can I ask about the preparation of budgets? Is 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 this the case? Is it the case that budgets each year have included, typically include items that um, um, will at an appropriate point in the coming financial year require a council resolution to be implemented? But where the council resolution has not yet been made?
So you're asking me whether there were some assumptions including the budget where council resolution hasn't been made?
Items in the budget.
Items in the budget.
Yes, where where you're going to need a council, a council resolution in the future, but it's not ma- it's not been made.
Correct. So a budget is a plan, right? Um, so it may be included, it's a plan. But I I guess it has to be a reasonable plan, where you can actually deliver or not.
And from your perspective, that means if it's going to require a council resolution, you need a reasonable basis for expecting that the council resolution will be made, is that right?
Yes.
And so can I take by way of example, an expectation or a budget that includes a proposed acquisition or sale of land?
Correct.
Am I right that each year, um, the budget when settled in or when adopted by the council in June includes many items where there's going to be an ac- um, includes in various various items of the budgets, uh, figures that reflect that there's going to be or expected to be an acquisition or sale of land?
Not every year.
Um, well, bear in mind, I'm I'm not necessarily talking about large, um, um, large and significant pieces of land, but most most meetings council makes resolutions in relation to the sale or acquisition of some pieces of land, doesn't it?
Yes, generally, if there is, something is included in the budget, those items or those pieces of properties are actually identified.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If there is any item that is included in the budget, say, for example, land of sale of land, we know about that beforehand. So it's either in in a delivery plan or there's there's somewhere that item is included in there. And come that financial year, we'll include that. Okay, so this sale is earmarked. So I was referring to, say, thirty three Moore Street. I mean, there is a council resolution potentially and that property was identified and that that property is actually included in the budget in that year. Um, so in those cases, yes, it will be included.
And what what you may have is is a situation where um, uh, um, a a a sale of land or, well, and just to be clear, I'm I'm also asking about a situation where uh, the sale of of a particular plot of land or where where sale of land will not necessarily um, um, feature as its own item. For example, you 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 may be expecting a certain amount of income from sale of land without having earmarked the land to sell, but you know, you're going to be selling various pieces of land and you know the council will come to that in the coming financial year. Does that happen?
No, we do not make any general provision for sale of land. As opposed to what we do when we do the capital works budget, we have a general provision to buy land. And we don't know which lands are there, depending on, you know, the priority, what we want to deliver, what becomes more priority. So then that money is spent to buy the land. But in terms of sale, we don't have a general provision.
Thank you. And in in relation to purchasing, that buying land, you make general provision because you know you're going to be buying some land.
Yes.
But the actual.
Sale, no.
No, I'm sorry. In relation to the proposed purchases of land, the actual, when when you come to buying a particular piece of land, the resolution from the council to buy that land, that will come during the coming financial year, won't it?
Yes. So, sorry, 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 let me put this way. So we put a general provision in the in the budget to buy that, a property. When we identify that property and when you start entering into negotiations and and about to settle or or the price is agreed after negotiation, you go back to the council and get a resolution to do that.
Yes, and that and that latter step, going back to the council to get the resolution, that happens during the financial year after the budget, isn't it?
Correct. It may be the same year, it could be different years, depending on when you're ready.
And can I ask this? You referred, I think, uh, uh, earlier to uh, um, the absence of a rate incre- of of a council rate increase.
Yes.
Um, am I right? The IPART, the Independent uh Pricing and Regulatory Tribunal, it has a function of approving special variations to rates?
That's right.
And it it publishes them, is that right?
It does publish, yes.
But based on your position, are you able to give the commissioner an indication of um, of the frequency with 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 which those special variations are sought by other councils around the state?
There are many councils who are seeking massive increases. The recent one was North Sydney. Uh, I think a couple of days ago, we told, we heard about Black Town raising hundred and seventy one dollars per property. Those are specialized variations that be infected in. As far as Liverpool is concerned, to assist fund the operations of the building uh, of 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 the council, we haven't sought, uh, from memory, I've been here for eleven years, we haven't sought any nor have affected anything in the long term financial plan.
Thank you, Mr. Nadan. Commissioner, those are our questions.
Um, in answer to some of Mr. Emmett's questions, you made reference to a provision in the capital works budget for land acquisition.
Yes.
And just to make sure I've understood it correctly, that's a provision that's made every year, although a particular piece of land may not yet have been identified?
Generally, yes.
Is there an average amount that's provisioned?
Uh, around fifty million?
Fifteen?
Fifty five zero.
Five zero each year?
Yes, and it comes from the section. Mostly they are funded from the developer contributions and we buy land and then we deliver infrastructure. So that's the provision. But as you know, this, the negotiations and all those hurdles takes a lot of time, two years, three years kind of thing. So about fifty million is general provision.
Each year?
Yes.
And and I don't have it in front of me, but does that appear as a as its own line item in the?
Land acquisition, yes, in capital works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Dada. My name is Claire Palmer and I saw Mr. Nune.
Um, sorry, Ms. Palmer, would you mind just perhaps moving that microphone a little closer to you? Thank you.
Please let me know if you can't hear that, Commissioner.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Nadan, I just wanted to take you back to an area that the commissioner addressed briefly with you. He had taken you to the document, which is the ten year financial plan, and he pointed you in particular to the line borrowing costs.
Yes.
Um, in connection to borrowing costs, you mentioned that the civic place had been a significant source of borrowing costs, is that correct?
That's right.
And I think you also mentioned in your evidence to the commissioner that it, the cost of civic place overall was four hundred million dollars, is that correct?
I don't believe I made that statement.
Excuse me, I thought I heard a figure of four hundred million.
No, not from me.
I thought the witness was referring to the amount of the borrowings, which was two.
Two hundred million.
The amount of the borrowings was just two hundred million?
Yes.
Um, and.
Because the, sorry, the civic place itself has costed council two hundred and twenty million dollars.
Two hundred and twenty million dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
When we talk about four hundred, that includes the developer works, that's not council's cost.
That includes the, excuse me, could you just?
The developer cost. The, so the whole Liverpool civic place, there are two components. One is council works.
Yes.
One is the developer works.
Yes.
And you talk about council works, that's the two hundred and twenty million we're talking about.
Yes.
The developer works is not council's liability.
Yes.
All we do is transfer that piece of land to them and they develop, and that's their cost.
Thank you. And so, um, in that case then, uh, there are loan facilities with relevant institutions that totals approximately two hundred million?
Two hundred point five million.
Two hundred point five million, um, in respect of the Liverpool Place project. And um, is it correct that these loans um uh incorporate incorporating into the budget as about seven million per year in interest costs?
About that, yes.
In the in respect of uh civic place only?
Correct.
And um, in light of this, uh, would you agree that the civic place project has placed significant fa- financial pressure on council in terms of servicing those loans and paying those interest costs?
Yes.
Um, would you also agree, Mr. Dada, that that has placed some pressure on council um, in terms of um, having to consider the sale of various assets in circumstances where otherwise might not have been considering that?
Yes, when we went to T Corp for the last trench of the loan, we took that loan as interest only and we did indicate that we will sell a particular property to repay that loan in five years' time.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Nadan, um, I now want to um, take you to the events of April twenty twenty four. This is a different, different topic.
Twenty twenty four, okay.
Yes, and just one one event in particular. Um, I understand that there was.
Sorry, sorry, can I can I interrupt?
Excuse me.
Have you left Liverpool civic place topic or you're going to come back?
I've left the civic place topic.
All right, I guess, um, the information of of the commissioner, um, this project started back in twenty fifteen.
Yes.
Uh, a contract was signed with, signed with Bilt and the PDA was agreed. When I talk about the PDA, is a legally binding contract.
Yes.
That was signed in twenty sixteen with Bilt.
Yes.
Now, things, the prices changed, the scope of the project changed. Um, and I guess that was due to some planning requirements and some additional things that the councillors wanted. And the price then changed from seventy at that point in time to hundred and ninety five million dollars. And I think that has been explained by various audit documents that have actually done that. I guess that's that's.
Commissioner, um, Mr. Nadan, I don't have any more specific questions about civic place, but I appreciate you explaining some issues to the commissioner.
Yeah, so I guess I was trying to make a point that this is something that we've inherited and we are just managing it the best as possible.
Something that you inherited, the um, the 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 present council as constituted inherited.
Yes.
Um, thank you. Um, I'm moving briefly to another topic, a very ash, very small number of questions. Um, I wanted to take you to April twenty twenty four. And there was a significant council meeting on twenty fourth of April in twenty twenty four. Um, can you recall uh any particular council meeting that took place at this time that had special significance?
In twenty, in April twenty twenty four?
Twenty twenty four. And I might, um, this might assist in uh, um, helping you recall that at this, in advance, and and please say if you don't recall this and um, but in advance of this particular meeting, there was an allegation circling that council was looking at sacking a hundred and fifty staff members. Do you have any recollection of that?
I believe that was something which was advocated by the union from, that's all. But as far as our discussions or my discussions with the executives or the CEO, I don't recall any discussions around that.
Um, does that mean it's the case, Mr. Nadan, that you didn't complete any financialing model, any financial modeling at that time uh, in respect of the propos- of any proposal to cut a hundred and fifty jobs?
No.
Um, are you aware of any other person in the council who completed such modeling?
I don't think so.
And as CFO, you would have been aware, isn't it the case, if any person had completed such modeling?
I would have.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dada, I have no further questions. Uh, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Uh, does anyone in the back row seek to ask Mr. Dada any questions? No? Anything for you, Mr. Dava? No. Miss McDonald?
Yes. Mr. Nadan, you asked some questions um about the sale of land. Uh, and you said, look, we, something along the lines of we know because there's a delivery plan?
Yes.
When you refer to a delivery plan, what were you referring to?
It's it's one of the key documents. It has a a four year term. So when the council normally comes in, they say, is what we're going to deliver in four years? Then that plan obviously is re- is reviewed each year, but not significantly. There is another plan which sits underneath that, which is the operating plan. So that basically talks about what is going to be delivered in the next financial year. And then that is supported by the resourcing plans, which is the long term financial plan, the asset management plan and the workforce management plan, the old supplementals. So if we, when I talk about that piece of land, that was not in any of these documents. I guess there was this bit of, if you if you are, if I may assume that you are using Three Hoxton Park Road as a piece of land.
Mm hmm.
There's a bit of history or test to that.
Is what, sorry?
Bit of history or test to that. The history is this, that, um, we, council once upon a time owned that piece of land. And later on, council actually sold that piece of land and then council bought it back. And the rationale or the reasoning provided to the governing body at that point in time, why we are buying that land back, was that the location of this piece of land was very strategic positioned and that will have an impact on the development of the Woodward Park master planned, if council had to do that. And that's the reason we had to buy it. So I guess the decision in retrospect to sell it back didn't make sense, didn't pass a reasonable test and test, if you like.
Okay, the um, again, a rough indication of approximately when the council bought Three Hoxton Road back?
Can't recall it, but it has to be seven, eight years ago.
Uh, you spoke about the sale of land. I'm sorry, purchasing land. I'm sorry, purchasing land and that there is a provision for potential, um, purchase of the land.
Correct.
And my note was that that was related to, is it a, um, a capital expenditure?
It's funded through the developer contributions, section seven eleven that council has collected. And then we buy these pieces of land to deliver infrastructure within those contribution plans.
Um, I was going to ask, why wasn't the purchase of Cow Pasture Road funded by that means? But I think you've answered it when you said it's linked with the seven eleven contributions.
Correct, so there is a plan for each area.
Mm hmm.
And then council then says, I'm going to deliver all this infrastructure because you're developing that. And you need to pay this amount, we collect it and then we deliver that infrastructure. And Cow Pasture Road was not part of those plans.
Uh, you were asked about increases in rates and you gave evidence that. Um, there hadn't been any special variation to the rates charged to Liverpool City Council's, um, community?
Correct.
Uh.
So, sorry, when I talk about the special rate variations, that is on top of what I part has already determined.
That was what I was going to ask you.
Yeah.
Um, for the, the current, this financial year, there's been an increase of six percent?
Correct, so they'd had two parts of it, within the six percent, so I part said, uh, I think it's about. Two percent, two percent is a growth factor and the balance of four percent, thereabouts, is for the general simple cost increases. Yeah.
It's nothing further.
Could you just, um, give me an example of, um, land that might be purchased through this capital works provisioning using a. The section eleven grant, just leading on from the answers you've given to council assisting?
A example of a land?
Yeah, just an example of how that provision might actually come to be used. One from the past or or just a hypothetical even, just so I can get a sense of how that money might be used from time to time.
Okay, so under the contribution plan, um, uh, council would have indicated to the developers that. Due to your development, these are the other, um. Facilities that council needs to provide for these people who are going to come and live there, and typically it could be parks.
I see.
Yeah, so, um, if there is a piece of land in there and that needs to be converted into a recreation area. Council will use that money to buy that land.
Great, thank you, that's very.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could I just ask?
I set the ball running. You can, you can kick it again.
You were asked some questions about civic place. Civic place currently not only houses, um, council facilities and staff. But also different floors are privately leased?
Yes, so we have, council has entered into lease with, or currently we have the St George Housing Commission.
Mm hmm.
Um, I believe we have a university who's already taken five levels.
Is that the University of Wollongong?
I believe so.
Mm hmm.
And, um, we have also entered into a, a head of lease agreement with the South Wales Police. So I think they're taking level eleven, uh, sorry, seven.
Uh, so that results in the building being, um, a hundred percent occupied?
Correct.
And the St George Housing Commission, the university and the police, they've entered, um, long leases?
Yes, about ten, fifteen, I believe.
And that's generating income for the council because of the rent that they pay.
That's right.
No further questions.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mister Nadan, that completes your evidence, um, for the moment. As is been happening with all other witnesses, I won't formally excuse you from further attendance at the moment. In the event that we need to get you back, someone will let you know, but, um, as soon as you can be released from your summons, that will be communicated to you. Uh, thank you for your attendance and your assistance over two, except very long days, I'm most grateful for your assistance and you're free to go for the moment.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anything else I need to do this afternoon?
No, thank you.
Uh, we'll adjourn until ten A M tomorrow.